It being six o'clock, I call the January 2021 Town of Clayton Planning Board meeting to order for roll call. It looks like we're missing board member Lipscomb tonight. Is this on? Can you hear me okay? Let's see, item number two on our agenda this evening is adjustments to the agenda, and we are going to go ahead and make one. We're going to move item seven A to take place after item six C. And just so that the folks with the item, the Caterpillar Visitor Center major site plan are not waiting for us to sit through the discussion for item six D. Save them some time. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda needed? If there are none, we are going to move on to item number three, administration of It is our honor and privilege this evening to swear in three individuals to the planning board. We will have Mr. Powers and Mr. Bizel sworn in as returning planning board members. And then we will have Ms. Begley sworn in as our newest member of the board. So if the three of you will please come forward, and you can just maintain a distance of six feet apart in this area here, and the town clerk will administer the oaths.
(inaudible)
to put you on the spot, Ms. Begley, but if you would like to just say a few words about what brought you to this to this board, or say whatever you'd like.
Sure. Thank you. Well, I've been in Clayton for many, many years now, and I just have a very good love for it and a heart that just kind of centers here in Clayton, and I wanted to serve in the best way possible, and I felt like this was a great start. So thank you for having me, and I'm looking forward to being part of this board.
Thank you for being here. Our next item on the agenda this evening is number four, the election of board chair and co-chair. First, we can open up the floor for any discussion of this matter, and then I can accept nominations. I didn't realize this until speaking with other board members yesterday, that we are allowed to to serve consecutive terms. So if that's something that that, you know, people out there had a question about, that's the answer to that. Are there any other discussion items for this? Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
How long is the term? Is it the three years?
It's a one-year term for the the chair and the co-chair. Anything else? And if not, then the floor is open for for nomination, and we could go with board chair first.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate you, Andrea Merritt for chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. Second? Okay, so we have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations for board chair? Okay, hearing none, then we will vote to elect me, Andrea Merritt, as board chair. All those in favor say aye. Those say no. The ayes have it. Thank you. I'm happy to serve as your board chair for another year. Now we can go ahead and elect a board co-chair. Do we have any nominations for that?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Bucky Coats.
I will second that. Any other nominations for the co-chair position?
Okay. Vice chair instead of co-chair.
Oh, was it vice chair? Okay, thank you. Vice chair. Good to know. Alrighty, hearing are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, we will vote to elect Mr. Bucky Coats as the vice chair. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Mr. Coats will serve as the vice chair for 2021.
Thank you very much for your confidence.
Thank you for serving. The next item on the agenda is number five A, approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes needed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move that we accept the minutes.
Motion to approve by board member Powers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by board member Bizel. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is six A, 2020-95-CUP hurricane fencing conditional use permit. And this being an evidentiary hearing, we will hear from our town attorneys first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Francis Raspberry with the Colley Bridgen Law Firm. To my left is Kelly Chase, also with the law firm. We are appearing tonight as a team, basically to broaden our skills. Kelly has hit the ground running, representing the town as new town attorneys, doing real estate and other matters. And so she is she is here. We are here together to come familiar with the board, because we will be sitting with the board as its counsel, in its routine conduct of business, and also in the quasi judicial hearing area. As a as a way of introduction to the quasi judicial part of the agenda tonight, I understand you have two cases falling in that category. This may be my remarks that I'll offer may be very repetitive to those of you who are veterans of the process, but particularly to new folks and the those interested in in the cases, the applicants and others potentially appearing to speak. The quasi judicial process, also known as court-like, because quasi judicial is such a mouthful, and I have a hard time sometimes pronouncing it, any one of the three ways that you hear it. But the quasi judicial process is very unlike the process that you see at the traditional public hearing, say that the town council would conduct. The town council sits in a legislative capacity most of the time. And in its legislative capacity, the town's board makes decisions with a broad range of discretion to determine what is wise and prudent for the town, whether to rezone property, for example, whether to adopt a particular ordinance on a given subject, or to adopt a budget, if you will. Those are legislative determinations. This, in contrast, is a quasi judicial process, and it applies because of a Supreme Court decision of about two dozen years ago in this state, that ruled that whenever a decision is made that relates to the rights of a particular party to do a particular thing based upon an evaluation of criteria that involves some subjective judgment in those criteria, and applying those to the facts of a particular case, that is a court-like or quasi judicial sort of process. And the courts have told us that when a quasi judicial proceeding is required, there are half a dozen benchmark requirements that have to be observed. In summary, in a quasi judicial proceeding, the parties have the right to counsel, they have the right to cross-examine witnesses, minutes must be maintained, there must be some elemental rules of procedure, some attention to the standards for admissibility of evidence, a record has to be maintained. There may be no ex-party communications, that is, there's no lobbying. It's very important that the board members not speak to any interested party concerning the substance of a case that will be heard in a quasi judicial capacity. There are rules on conflicts of interest. Conflicts of interest have to be disclosed, and potentially members, decision makers have to be excused. Finally, there's an appeal to Superior Court based on the record in the case, and the appeal is on the record. That is, it's an evaluation by the court of whether the decision was supported by competent evidence, and whether it was lawful or not, based on the record itself. It's not a new proceeding. Those are essentially the high points regarding quasi judicial proceedings. As necessary, part of the attorney's role is to is to step in and offer a comment or suggestion concerning procedure, or whenever there's any concern that the due process standards required of this type of hearing aren't being satisfied. I don't anticipate that will happen frequently, if at all. We are working closely with the staff. I say we, Kelly and myself, our law firm, will be working closely with the staff. We are the attorneys, however, for the city, and to that extent, for the board. We represent the board as a group, as it does its work. It's interesting, now that we have, and I'm sure you all have heard it about this to death, presentations by lawyers and planners and others, we have new attorneys for the city. There is a new set of general statutes about to be made applicable to the land use decision-making process that is effective in Clayton. And of course, changes in your UDC to incorporate all those state statutory changes. So there's a lot new coming down the pipeline. We're here to help, and we're happy to be here tonight, and look forward to working with you all in the in the months ahead.
Excellent. Thank you for that. We can now hear from staff. Oh, sorry. We do need to swear in anyone who plans to speak at this particular hearing. So the town clerk.
(inaudible) please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true, to the best of your own knowledge and belief?
I do.
Once you speak, if you please sign that closing signing sheet.
Thank you. And we'll now hear from staff.
Good evening, Chairman Offutt, members of the planning board. My name is Jeff Kane. So I'm a land use planner with the town of Clayton. I'm here to present tonight the conditional use permit for hurricane fencing. There is, on a side note, there is an associated minor site plan with it. However, the board will be making their decision on the conditional use permit only, and the minor site plan is a director's decision as well. But we've tied both of them together, since one is a use and the other one is basically the site plan for the project. So as shown here, the, as I mentioned before, the current use of the of the property is a contractor's building, contractor's office, which is allowed through a conditional use permit in in the zone. It's approximately 1.5 acres in size, located on the south side of town off of Business 70 and Gordon Street, in the northeast corner of Gordon Street. The property on the arrow photograph outlines the property that is being reviewed tonight. The applicant's request, the applicant's requesting that the existing building continue to be used as a contractor's office. It was under some land use enforcement, if you will. And the goal here is to bring the property up into compliance and current land use standards, since that's why we're going through this process tonight. As I mentioned before, we are, there is an associated minor site plan with it. It is a director's decision, but I want to show you the site plan, which was presented to staff for the review. Upon the decision of this board, the director will have the ability to render her decision, either for or not for this approval or denial of the minor land use site plan. Staff has taken a close look at this application, both on the zoning, compliance, and also the comprehensive plan for the zoning and development codes. We've come to the conclusion that this business is allowed through the conditional use permit process in the B3 zone. I just wanted to point out, excuse me, that if you look at the highlighted area where the property is, subject property is located, you do see a piece that's a different color, RE, to be specific. This was on our GIS maps. It's a little bit different than the Johnston County. I have contacted our GIS department to take a closer look at this, to make sure that both maps align correctly. But rest assured that the piece where the contractor's office is specifically located is all entirely within the B3 zoning district. The area that's RE is part of a parking lot. But we're going to get to the bottom of this and make the maps accordingly. But I, in looking at the Johnston County GIS, there's that portion that's RE on this subject site should be red, meaning that it's a B3 zoning. As stated earlier, the staff has taken a look at the comprehensive plan for the future land use. This site is designated employment center, and you can see the surrounding properties are also designated employment center on the comprehensive plan. These, Employment Center incorporates both B3 highway business, which is this property, and then the properties to the north and to the east are designated light industrial I1. Both are within the comprehensive plan for employment centers, so both are consistent with the long-range plan of the town. And some considerations for tonight, the planning board. As I mentioned before, this is for a conditional use permit for the use on the site. There is an associated minor site plan with it, which is director's decision. The planning board does make the final decision. is all entirely within the B3 zoning district. The area that's RE is part of a parking lot. But we're going to get to the bottom of this and make the maps accordingly. But in looking at the Johnston County GIS, there's that portion that's RE on this subject site should be read, meaning that it's a B3 zoning. As stated earlier, the staff has taken a look at the comprehensive plan for the future land use. This site is designated employment center, and you can see the surrounding properties are also designated employment center on the comprehensive plan. Employment Center incorporates both B3 highway business, which is this property, and then the properties to the north and to the east are designated light industrial, I1. Both are within the comprehensive plan for employment centers, so both are consistent with the long-range plan of the town. And some considerations for tonight, the planning board. As I mentioned before, this is for a conditional use permit for the use on the site. There is associated minor site plan with it, which is director's decision. The planning board does make the final decision regarding the conditional use permit. And for this, the applicant also has addressed the specific facts and findings of this. The burden proof is on the applicant. We've taken a close look at this. The applicant has addressed all of the criteria. Although the staff, and just at the bottom, the staff does not make a recommendation on these quasi-judicial applications regarding approval or denial. We strictly review the application for what they have in it to show, to ensure that it meets the development code and the comprehensive plan, and to make sure that the applicant does meet the findings, the facts. Although I did say, staff does not recommend a recommendation of approval or denial on this, we do have a recommendation for the development of it. And the specific one is making sure that the stormwater ordinances are met. So in this case, we did look at stormwater for the zoning compliance permit with the stormwater engineer, the town stormwater engineer, and she did request to add this condition on the construction documents, to ensure that this specific project is, when it's ultimately brought up to town standards, does meet stormwater management practices, which would be reviewed during the construction document phase of this. If this application is approved, it would move into construction documents, in which case they would, they would need to comply with current stormwater standards. But staff itself does not say we approve or deny this application. So if approved, we like this condition in there, so the engineering department can take a look at it, to make sure that stormwater is handled in a proper and prudent manner. And with that, that concludes the staff's presentations. The applicant's representative is here tonight. If you have any questions for Mr. Kirk Lane with True Line Surveying. So if there's any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
The partial lot at the back there, excuse me, at the back there that you said is not really that way, if I'm not mistaken. If you go back to the zoning map, that one, the little segment at the back there, if you go from, that's an extension of the land on the southeast side. Is that correct? Or it's green, where it was green a second ago.
So the part that was in question, where it's green, is actually the extension of the parking lot of the subject of this property. There is a sliver, a triangular piece at the very bottom that's fitting Gordon, that is not, is not part of this property. It's actually part of the L1 property to the east.
Okay. On the question I have, and it is just a question, the land on the south side of Gordon Road there, that is RE.
Yes.
When you were describing the next slide with the employment center stuff, I thought you had said that it was either B1 or light industrial. Am I incorrect on that?
Yeah, let me further clarify the point. There is, there is the RE, the residential estate section, south of Gordon Road, in the light color. And it is under the comprehensive plan under employment center. But considering that is mostly used as a county designation, the most you can do on that is some sort of large-scale residential, meaning one home. Every project we've worked with in this area that has that designation under the employment center usually rezones it to a commercial or industrial use.
Just confused me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Mr. Bizzle?
Jeff, just to kind of summarize, see, this, I guess, basically, the site that we constructed, the contractor's office use has already been established, it just didn't go through conditional use process. Is that kind of where we're at?
Yeah, that's correct. The contractor's, yeah, the contractor's office moved into the site, did not go through the proper land use planning actions of getting the conditional use permit, hence the code enforcement action to have the applicant come through the proper process, which they're doing now, in order to be allowed to occupy that space.
And they're working through the minor site plan process to bring the site up to the code.
That's correct, yeah. But they put the carton for the horse, if you will, in this case, yes.
Okay.
I'm trying to think if I can clarify that for myself as well. It's kind of like, I don't, I've never seen one come before us before, this, where it's already in use that way, and we're kind of retroactively doing the conditional use. Did you have something to add, Samantha?
Good evening, Samantha Woolen Weber, Planning Director. So this is what we call an after-the-fact variance. We had one similar, it was on at the Vincent site a couple of years ago, and that was an after-the-fact variance. So basically, that happens when something is already existing, they moved in. This is in the outskirts of the ETJ, so they may have just not known the process, which is common, it's not out of the ordinary. So once the, we were notified about the use, we did cite them, and they came through the process, and now they're finalizing that. And so we are happy to bring the site into compliance if it is at the wishes of the board, and if it is approved tonight, and they will further bring the site into compliance with all the landscaping, parking, and those types of standards.
Okay. So I guess, because what I was trying to clarify for myself is, as we go through the findings of fact, I guess we would need to think of it as though it was undeveloped. Are we answering these questions as though the property is as it is now? Does that make sense? Because we're trying to answer, you know, it's already there in that way. So as we answer those, are we, are we considering what's there currently that shouldn't be there, or are we answering it as though it was never built? Does that make sense?
Yes. So this is an existing structure, it's just a new business occupying the site, it's a new use. So I would answer the findings of fact as if they were not on the site, and you was just a, even though they are already existing on the site. So for instance, let's say that this was not approved tonight, then they would have to vacate the site unless they did an appeal.
Okay.
Right. So you would want to address it just like you wanted, they were not on the site yet.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
But again, staff, and we did conclude that it was consistent with the area, but we do not make any further recommendations beyond that.
Right. Okay. Excellent. Other questions for staff?
Samantha, I just had a question. So we're obviously approving the use as a conditional use. The site plan is obviously going through administrative process. Is it fair to say that the site plan is moving along well, that we're not going to approve the use, that the site plan can't be followed?
Right. And they do have a site plan that is submitted. Jeff can go to that one, Brian. It is right there.
First, moving through the process. You go.
Okay. All right. Good questions.
Thank you.
Anything else for staff? All right. And then, did the applicant want to speak, or did you just want to answer questions if needed? Seemed like you planned to speak since you were sworn in, so.
Little bit. Good evening, Board. Kirk Lane, True Line Surveying here, representing Mr. Ted Chiasa and Hurricane Fencing here. So there's two things. One that may help is that Hurricane Fencing is the name of the business that's in here. That's the contractor that's in, it's a fencing company. And I don't know if it's been there 10 years, but they have been occupying this building for a number of years. 10 would be the number that I would say would be logical. So they're not, they didn't move in six months ago in circumventing rules. They've been there for a long time and didn't know that they were, Mr. Chiasa didn't know that he wasn't following the rules when he found out. Now, we've been starting this process for about a year, doing recombinations, moving the property lines to make sure that the parking fits on this building, and this is the last two pieces of the puzzle. One is the conditional use permit from this board, and then staff approval, planning director approval of the minor site plan, which has been submitted and been through TRC and through comments, well, not TRC, but through the staff commenting process. And the other item that I wish to speak to tonight is, I think, maybe, this is the first time for you guys as well, is I think I have to on record say we hereby accept the conditions of the staff for the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
But we have, we have read and have seen the conditions placed by the staff, and we accept those conditions.
Excellent. I was unaware of that either, so appreciate that. Very good. Are there any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, let's see. Are there any public comments at this time for this item? There does not appear to be any. So if not, then I will turn this over to the board for discussion, and we can discuss this. I wanted to start off by saying, it's just been a while since I've seen one of these, and so I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have the, the document here was at your seat for the motion, especially for our new folks who may not have seen this before. And it does kind of help clarify the four conditions that we're looking at here. And then there are three options to approve, deny, or approve with conditions, which in this case, if we're going to, if there is going to be a motion, it should probably, you know, just pointing out to you that there are conditions. So any comments from the board? Don't see any at the moment, unless, Mr. Bizzle, you had something.
Yeah, I would just say that this is a little unusual, but it's, I feel better knowing that the site plan has been submitted and has been through the process, and most likely can be approved, so I feel, I feel good about supporting the conditional use.
Thank you. I would agree. Since there aren't, unless we have other comments, what I think we should do here then is, as a board, look at these four conditions. So it sounds like Board Member Bizzle and myself are both in agreement that this would work. So in that case, as you look at your motion sheet, and let's see, I guess I probably need to clarify with either Samantha or the attorneys. I can't remember if we're supposed to actually read these out verbatim, each condition, each of the four, or findings, I'm sorry, the four findings of fact. Do we read them out?
I assume we're referring to the subsections in the code itself.
Um, let's see. So the first one, for example, would be, the application will not material, okay. Thank you.
The findings of fact will be drawn directly from the code section 155.710 to A through D. A, that the application will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans as submitted and approved.
And I'm sorry, I wanted to, before I waste your time, I just wanted to clarify. So my question was, do we need, as we, if we make a motion, do we need to read each of our four as part of our motion?
Well, I think you can abbreviate it. You can just say, drawn from those provisions of the code, and then the minutes can reflect them word for word. That would be perfectly fine.
Okay.
I thought you were cueing me to read them.
I'm sorry. No, that's why I stopped you, and I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just didn't want to go down that rabbit hole. Because I know in the past, we have done a motion before where we read them all out verbatim, but I didn't know if that was required or not, so. Okay. So back to the board. What it looks like then is we can make a motion to approve, deny, or approve with conditions, and that we could state in an abbreviated way the four findings of fact. So is there any questions about that? And if not, I can entertain a motion.
Chair, I'm making motion to approve.
And just to clarify, would that?
Want me to read?
Sure. We can either read, or as the attorney stated, I just wanted to clarify on your motion, do you want that to be approved with the condition? They, the staff outlined a condition that prior to issuance, they would coordinate with the town stormwater engineer to provide what needs for that property to meet those So your motion could be to approve with the condition. Does that work? Okay. And Mr. Bizzle, would that be your second?
Okay.
Okay. Great. And then, what's comfortable for you? Do you want to read each of the four? Okay. So it would, go ahead.
The motion is based on the following findings. The application will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans as submitted and approved. Two, the application meets all required specifications and conforms to the standards and practices sound land use planning and the town code of ordinance and other applicable Three, the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abuding property, abutting property, and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. Four, the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of this town or violate the character of existing standards for development of adjacent properties.
Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Thank you all for bearing with me with that. The next item on our agenda this evening is 6B, 2020-175-VAR, the lofts at Wild District variance. And again, to remind everyone of the words from our attorney, this is an evidentiary hearing, so all those wishing to speak, would you please stand, and the town clerk will swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. If you solemnly affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief.
Aye.
First sign of the sign.
Thank you. We'll now hear from staff.
Good evening, Board Chair Merritt, members of the planning board. My name is Jeff Cains, land use planner with the town of Clayton. I'm here to present the second application. The lofts at Wild District is for a variance, project number 2020175VAR. The specific variance is in reference to the development of townhomes or apartments within this zoning district, the B1 zoning district, a property that's less than 10,000 square feet. This specific property is about 6,750 square feet. It's currently in vacant use. There was a brick building on it a number of years ago. I think it's called the Red and White was on this site. And the current location is just off O'Neil and 110 West Front Street. And as I mentioned, the applicant has submitted, this will be used for an apartment complex. There is a separate application for a site development, application that will be heard by the town council. This is just one of four applications to be heard for this specific project. For the variance tonight, the things to keep in mind is, the variance does run with the land, and the site, this site plan is subject to change. There's a site plan that was submitted by the applicant, who is here tonight, Mr. Dave Young with River Wild, sitting back there. He does have a presentation, so he can speak more in detail about this overall development. But this specific variance is because the code does state that if you're going to build townhomes, apartments, it cannot be properties less than 20,000 square feet. In the past, just as a side note, there was a variance that was requested and approved by the board to have for setbacks. So you do see this development as shown here in the site plan. It does not need to meet current setbacks, because as I mentioned before, it does run with the land, and there was a variance that was approved, say, five, five to seven years ago with this project. was approved, say five, five to seven years ago with, with this project. And here's the recent view of the property taken last week when I posted the site, show that is vacant. With sidewalk infrastructure, this, this is facing east. Some of the considerations, again, staff has taken a close look at this project. We, the, we have determined that the applicant has addressed the findings of fact. As I mentioned before, staff does not make recommendations of approval or denial on this. For this type of project, this is what the planning board is, is requested to approve or deny the variance for this if, if the applicant can build townhomes or apartments on a piece of property that's less than 20,000 square feet. And with that, it's the end of staff's presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned before, Mr. DeYoung is here with a presentation, and he may be able to answer questions that I may not on this specific project. That, I don't-
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff?
Yes. Did you, it sounded like when you first started saying the B1 requirements were 10,000 square feet, and then later on, it sounded like it was 20,000 square feet. When I looked it up, I, I thought I was looking at 20,000 square feet is, is the minimum in B1 for townhomes or apartments.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah, that's correct. I may have missed book. I apologize for that, but it's 20,000.
Okay. So, and when I looked on the GIS, again, which is near here or there, I guess, the square footage of the lot we're talking about was 5,500 and some square feet. So what we're talking about is a variance that would allow something that's less than a third the size of, of, of what the ordinance was put there to not have.
You, you can look at it that way. That's correct. The ordinance, the Development Code does state the B1 zoning district, that apartments and townhomes need to be built, constructed on lots of no less than 20,000 square feet. With this property, it's an existing legal lot of record within the zoning district, and so the, there's an associated application heard after this application for a rezone. But with that being said, the B1 zoning district, you can, is, the Development Code says you cannot build townhomes or apartments on lots less than 20,000 square feet.
It, when I, when I looked at that, it looked as though the rezone was because the B1 in the downtown area did not allow residential on the first floor. And that's what the rezone was going to allow, residential on the first and, and however other many floors there are.
There, for the rezone, I don't want to get too detailed on it until the application's up for, for review. But there are a number of reasons why the applicant has requested a rezone out of the downtown overlay district to a strict B1 zoning district only. And maybe when, in his opportunity to speak, he can go into more detail on what that is. But under the strict B1 zoning district, if the rezone moves forward, then you would only look at the 20,000 square foot section. If you, if the downtown overlay is still on top of this, yes, you do have other design standards that you must meet as well.
So that would just remove something that would not normally be in a B1 area?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Yes, ma'am.
This may be a premature question. Do they know at this point, so on 6,750 square feet, how many units they're looking to put there? I may be jumping the gun. I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's, that's a fair question, because this, like I said it before, this app, this project has four associated applications. Two of them are going to be heard tonight by the planning board, and two will be heard, maybe three heard by the town council. This project also came up about a year ago under, under a similar name, the lofts. And at that time, and under this one as well, the applicant proposes eight, eight single, eight apartments, all of them are one-bedroom apartments.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Quick question. Parking. Parking, the only parking is across the city street in the railroad right of way. That didn't look like a really good idea to me. Is, is, am I just looking at it from the wrong side? I mean, everybody who lives there is going to be going back and forth across Front Street every day, and knowing the reputation of the railroad, they may not be able to the whole time they're living there if the railroad decides they want to do something with that, with that land, because it, it is their right of way.
So I, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to touch on what a good idea and bad idea is, because it's very subjective. But I will say that the planning director does have the ability to take a closer look at parking, and I know she's probably walking up right now to explain this to you, but she does have the ability to take a close look at parking and waive specific parking requirements for downtown-type developments. And she's looking at me probably right now. So I'm just going to back off and let her-
Thank you, Jeff. Again, Samantha, the Will and waiver planning director. So tonight, the, I just want to make sure we have the agenda items very clear. This is for variance. The variance is only for the lot size of 20,000 square feet. It was actually last year where they had the variance for the reduced setback because it abutted residential, but it is, it is in the B1 district. So I just want to make sure that it was clear. So right now, you're just considering the variance for the 20,000 square foot lot size. So that's going to be a variance of approximately 13,000 square feet, as stated in your staff report. The rezoning is another item. That's later down the road. But right now, you're only focusing on the variance. There's not a site plan associated with the variance. It is just for the lot size requirement. So the site plan does not have to be associated with the variance. Just want to make sure they're very cut and dry on their two different cases, and that we are considering the appropriate information for the appropriate case.
Where would the, the availability of parking be discussed?
So downtown development is unique in, in every city and town, really, because you want to develop, and then you want to maximize your density. You want your buildings closer to the, to the street front, and you want to have visibility. And so parking is always a challenge, but there is some on-street parking. And there is a, multiple other projects in the area by the same applicant that will have a parking lot. But again, excuse me, that is another, that is another application, and this variance is only for the lot size. It is not the consideration of the apartments on the, on the lot. I mean, it is, because apartments technically have to have 20,000 square feet, but parking shouldn't, is not a consideration right now. But they, their parking has been thought of and talked about for multiple, multiple meetings and hours with, with these projects and the other projects coming through.
Okay. As I said to Mr. Currents, it seemed like even if, if you did squeeze those eight apartments in there, you, you were putting the, all the people who live there in, you know, a little more, I mean, I, I don't believe our, you may have just said a moment ago that the on-street parking on O'Neill is going to be there. Is there on-street parking on O'Neill?
Um, there is on-street parking on the railroad, and I've already been in contact with the railroad, and so has the applicant, about those parking spaces.
Right.
So again, that is something we'll look at whenever it comes through with the, this actual site plan.
Okay. So that, yeah, we won't have anything to do with that?
Correct.
It, it just confuses me that we would, the planning board would approve or disapprove something only looking at this part of it, when whether something or else happens is going to control if, if it gets done, whether it's approved or disapproved. But, okay.
I understand.
Can I ask something? If we approve hypothetically, if we were to approve it, does this variance stay permanent?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that how that works? Okay. Thank you.
So somebody could go and build one apartment versus, well, that wouldn't be apartment, but you know what I'm saying, they could build two or three instead of eight. I mean, there's, there's multiple different options. It's not, it's not set to the eight as shown here. Again, it's just the 20,000 square foot lot size variance.
Thank you. Mr. Bizzle, did you have a question?
Yeah. Samantha, I know we need to separate the site plan from variance, and I think it's the point, is there an off-street parking requirement for B1?
So in the B1 district, the planning director does have some discretion about parking.
Okay. So that could be cleared up?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yep. And I mean, and it's up to the, the applicant and their business model as far as if they want to install apartments but don't have garages or parking right out in front. But there is certain discretion with downtown parking. And most zoning codes I've seen, they, they have the same discretion for downtown parking.
So there was a parking requirement, but it can be met all on-street or off-street?
Right.
At the planning director's discretion?
Yes. There, there's multiple different options for parking.
Gotcha.
But in saying that, are you saying that with a set of apartments like that, that there can be cases where there is no, no parking available?
There could be.
Okay.
But again, that's not right now what, what we are discussing.
You put that, okay.
Any other questions? I do believe the applicant has a presentation as well.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. And we can now call upon the applicant.
Thank you. I will. Good evening. David DeYoung with River Wild. We're located at 114 West Main Street, right here on Main Street in Clayton. Hopefully I can address some of the concerns that you guys have already talked and put some clarifications out here so that you, you know exactly what we're trying to accomplish. As staff has already said, the subject property is located on the northeast corner of West Front Street and North O'Neill Street, just on the other side of the railroad tracks. And we are requesting a variance from UDC Section 15523K3A to allow apartments on a lot of less than 20,000 square feet. Little bit of a history lesson. This site used to contain the Red and White Quality Foods grocery store. It was built in the 1950s, and it took the, up the entire lot. It fell out of function in about 2003 and sat vacant since then. In 2012, the town of Clayton moved and put it into condemnation because it was falling in on itself, and it was a fire hazard to the surrounding structures. So in 2014, the building was actually torn down. So for the last six years, the building is, or the building, the site has been sitting vacant. It is clearly an infill site now. It is completely surrounded by either existing roads or existing houses. It can't be expanded any greater than it already is. So we are trying to come up with the best use for this property. We believe that use is apartments. And we did come through, actually it was in 2019. I think Jeff said it was a little earlier than that. But there was a variance on the site to reduce the allowance of setbacks so that something could actually be constructed on the site. It's a very narrow site. It's only 59 feet wide, so there's not a lot of room to do a whole lot of stuff. So what we have proposed here is not much different than what you see on Main Street. If you guys are familiar with Sandy Stevenson's building, which is on the corner of Smith and Main, he has a business on the first floor and three apartments above it, which are, and that lot is under 20,000 square feet in size. The reason he was able to do that was he put a commercial use on the first floor and then put apartments on the second floor. So he didn't need to get, do anything to, to, to go for a variance, because they were upper story, they were considered upper story apartments over retail. In this case, we didn't feel a retail use would be the best use on the first floor. It would have been a pretty good size, a 3,000 square foot tenant on the first floor, a 3,000 square foot tenant times, you know, five spaces per thousand square feet would have been about 15 parking spaces that would have been needed for a tenant on the first floor. And so instead of doing a first floor retail and four apartments above, we did four apartments down and four apartments up. Each apartment's about 1,000 square feet in size, a little bit less than that, actually. But it all does fit on the site, and what I have here is the architectural elevations. It's a little difficult to tell from the elevation, but that is white brick with metal awnings that go over the doorways and the landscape around it. Behind the site, between us and the adjacent resident, to our right, we do have, we have a privacy fence that wraps the whole site, but we do have outdoor amenity areas, bike racks, a fire pit, and I think area, like a dog run on the backside to accommodate use for the residents. With regard to parking, just because it was brought up, we do anticipate that the residents will want to use the parking spaces that are directly adjacent to the building in the right of way. But we are building a public parking lot across the street, so across on the other side of the tracks, we are building a 40 parking space parking lot that these residents will have a space designated for them in, including handicap spaces. And we do anticipate that that lot will be public. Clearly, the 40 spaces will be a big addition to downtown, and will also include availability for other things that happen in these blocks, plus on Town Square, since it'll be public. In addition to those 40 spaces, there are another 18 spaces, so you get up to just about 58 total parking spaces over there. But the other 18 spaces are subject to an agreement between the, the railroad and the town. So we're willing to build an additional 18 public parking spaces, but the town would have to extend their agreement that they have with the railroad for downtown. Right now, their agreement with the railroad stops at North O'Neill Street, so all the parking and everything you see that's in the railroad corridor right now on both sides of, of the railroad tracks is all part of that agreement. It's all public parking that was part of that agreement. With regard to the findings of fact, we addressed those, they're right here. They've been written to the record on the last case. But we have addressed those findings of fact, and they're part of the record as a part of the application. And I am happy to answer any questions about any of the findings or any other questions regarding the project.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I do. David, first of all, you mentioned about the first floor. When I read the code, that only applies on Main Street.
It's actually B1 zoning. It's upper story apartments are a permitted use in the B1 zoning district. And B1 is actually mostly in downtown, mostly on Main Street. This site is B1, and so are the, so is the, so are the buildings that are being built, the apartments and first floor retail that are being built out in Riverwood.
I believe the code then is written wrong, but anyway, it has nothing to do, I don't think, with this project. Could you address B, fact, finding of fact? My, my concern is the last part there, that hardships resulting from conditions that are common in the neighborhood or the general public may not be the basis for granting a variance. And this is a, you know, as mentioned before, this is a small, about a third of the required lot for this size apartment. But what is, what is different about this lot and any other lot in Clayton that would, that would call, would say we grant a variance for it?
Well, one, it's an existing infill lot. It's completely landlocked on all four sides. It can't be expanded in size without the acquisition of additional pieces of property. No matter what you put on this property, whether it's apartments, or if it's a retail use, which could go on the property, it's going to have, it's going to have hardships, whether that, you want to call that parking, whether you want to call that, it's lot size. I would like to say that, you know, we put- I would like to say that, you know, we put townhomes up all, all day, every day around town, and their, you know, their, their lot size is basically the size of the townhome unit, which is about 1,200 square feet. So, you know, when you think about, are you putting a lot, a townhome, or an apartment on a lot less than 20,000 square feet? It happens every single day. I would actually say that the town needs to look at that 20,000 square feet and see if it's right, because if you wanted to put a townhome on something under 20,000 square feet in downtown right now, you couldn't do it. Because if it was in the B1 zoning district anyways, I mean, certainly you could rezone out and get a special use permit. But I think what we've, what we've shown here is a best-case fix for a lot that used to be commercial and covered it completely with a supermarket. And that supermarket did try to come back but couldn't work to a vacant lot that has, nothing else has gone on it or no one else has tried to do anything with it for six years. And we can put eight apartments on there, which will be hooked to Town Clayton Power, be hooked to Town Clayton Water and Sewer, that will pay parks and rec fees, that will pay water and sewer system development fees, with all the existing infrastructure already in place. No extensions of public infrastructure to make this project work. It's all existing and in the existing right-of-way. So the hardship here really is that the lot can't be, can't be increased. We can't go to the right, to the left. If you actually wanted to make this a 20,000-square-foot lot, you almost have to go all the way to the next block, which is Church Street, if you took a measurement of that block. Jeff, I can't go back.
But that same problem is shared in all, in many neighborhoods and the community as a whole, in my opinion. And that, and it says that a variance is not the appropriate remedy for that kind of a condition or hardship, is the way I read that.
I don't, these are the findings of, these are the findings, in fact, out of your code, offline. I'm not reading, reading the one you, which one of those four are you saying I'm not meeting?
The...
The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property. The hardship, the property is landlocked. It is infill.
But why isn't that the same common problem with other properties in the town?
There, certainly, there are other, other, other properties in other locations that are, that's, that same condition is peculiar to that lot in that location.
But it says it may not be the basis for granting a variance.
It says that hardships resulting from personal circumstances, as well as hardships resulting from conditions that are common to the neighborhood or the general public, may not be the basis of granting the variance. The hardship here is that the condition of the property in this location at 6,800 square feet is specific to this property. It cannot be expanded without acquisition of other properties which are already constructed. This lot will never be bigger than 6,800 square feet. So it can never make the 12, 20,000 square feet. That's the hardship right there. If it could be 20,000 square feet, there wouldn't be a hardship. The problem is it's an infill lot that is bound to its size. It can't be anything else other than a 6,800-square-foot lot.
I agree with that, but I don't see any difference in, in that and others in, you know, in the town.
I mean, the, the first sentence in that, Mr. Coates, is the hardship results from conditions that are particular to the property, such as location, size, and topography. In this case, it's size. And it's not resulting from personal circumstances because the lot is existing. I didn't create the nonconformity here. The, the size of the property is the size of the property. And is it common to the neighborhood? Well, technically, yes. We had lots that went in on the other side of O'Neill Street that were smaller than the minimum 6,000-square-foot lot size. And the reason they went in smaller than 6,000 was because all the lots in the neighborhood are smaller than 6,000 square feet. So a 4,200-square-foot lot, or a 4,800-square-foot lot, or a 5,000-square-foot lot over in this, in this entire area, if, if it's a R6, it's supposed to be a 6,000-square-foot lot. I'd say 50% of the lots in this area don't meet the minimum lot size.
Thank you. Did you have any further questions, Mr. Coates?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Let's see, any other questions for the applicant this evening? All right. Thank you so much. Let's see, at this point in time, we can turn it over to the board for their consideration, keeping in mind again that we do have our findings of fact for the record in front of us. I had a few thoughts myself, but let's open it up to the board. Did someone want to make any comments about the finding of fact from their perspective?
So I was going to say that when I was reviewing this, because of course, our next item on the agenda here is the rezoning as well, I was trying to look at this as a number first. So we're talking about a zoning that has a 20,000-square-foot minimum, but a much smaller lot. And so to me, as I was reading the findings of fact, it was, you're not going to be able to do much with that size lot without some kind of allowance being made, in my opinion. And so as I kind of look at downtown as a whole, and realizing that, you know, we're, we're working with kind of a jigsaw puzzle of pieces that exist kind of imperfectly the way they are, and trying to come up with a useful, you know, structure or use to put on that lot, that it's going to be a problem just for the size that exists. So that's where I was kind of starting with this. Yes, board member powers?
I agree with that, but the 20,000-square-foot restriction is on apartments and townhomes. If you put something else on a, a 6,000-foot lot, there's, in some cases, you wouldn't need a variance at all.
And that, yes.
It's just the fact that this is a townhome or apartment complex, and the town, in their wisdom, has, has the rule saying it, it has to be a minimum of 20,000 square feet. If, if you had something that was 19, 18, 16,000 square feet, you know, you'd have some, some argument there, I would think. This, and we've been talking, discussing 6,600 square feet. As I said, when I looked this up on the GIS thing, it came up with 50, 5,500 square feet. Either one is a third of the size that the town says you can put a, a townhome or apartment complex on. They're not saying you can't put something else there. And I'm, I'm not saying that you can't put that, you, you need to put this, but that's what it seems to be saying in the, in the ordinances.
So just to follow up with that, you're coming at it more from the angle of they could put something else there and that, that they wouldn't need the variance, right?
They, they would, they would, probably would not need as, as much of a variance if you've got a minimum of 20,000 square feet for a townhome or apartment complex. I would assume a retail, one retail place, something like, is going to have a, a much lower minimum amount of land required.
And I'll let Mr. DeYoung, I believe he had a comment, so while he's coming up, I was going to say, you know, I see where you're coming from in terms of the other ordinances that exist and development throughout the town. And so, and that's fine, we can have a philosophical difference. For me, the difference is when you're trying to take an existing lot in a downtown area that's so restricted, and that's why we have this process here, is to allow those lots to be developed in different ways that, because of the limitations for where they're located.
Yes, but again, as I was saying, there, there are going to be limitations on these lots. They're, they're small, as, as Mr. DeYoung has saying, some of the ones across the street were extremely small, and allowances had to be made. And we may make allowances on this one. All I'm saying is, is that's not the only use that could be made of this lot. It is a small lot. And taking that into consideration, that, that should be a part of our, our decision, I would think.
Point taken.
I, I would just like to add, we, we've looked hard at this lot before we decided what was the best use for it. I mean, we, I mean, we wanted to make sure that everything worked on the lot in terms of location of our trash, location of the, the amenities for the residents, how many units there were actually going to be. We didn't want the units to be too small. We wanted the units to feel gracious for downtown, very similar to the one that Sandy Stevenson built on Main Street. We looked at other uses. We could put a commercial use back here, and a commercial use is going to require a commercial dumpster. A commercial dumpster needs to be set 50 feet off of a property line. The lot's only 58 feet. We would be back here asking you for a variance to allow us to put a dumpster next to somebody's house. We're not doing that. We could put two apartments on this site. It wouldn't generate enough revenue to make it worthwhile. You have to actually figure out what is an appropriate thing to actually build and, and lease out. And we'd still have to ask for the 20,000 square feet, because two apartments, or one apartment, or one townhome, or two townhomes would still require the 20,000-square-foot variance. I can say, and you're going to see the other applications we have coming through right now, parking is always, parking and lot size are always going to be limitations in a downtown area. The lots are set. You can't just go buy more land because you have neighbors. We had a neighborhood meeting. We had no opposition to that. I know that the Lees are here in the audience tonight. They, they actually own the barber shop across the street, which does not have any onsite parking. They also use the railroad corridor. They were happy to hear that we were building another parking lot downtown, which would support that. So I, I think when looking at this variance, you have to realize that it's been vacant for six years for a reason. No one's been able to come up with something that will work on it. We've worked really hard to come up with a development program that we think will be complimentary to the downtown, meet the downtown goals of bringing more housing into the downtown to support the downtown core, and at the same time, being a good use of the land and the infrastructure that's already in place. You have to remember, North O'Neill is one of the busiest streets in town. No one's going to want to put another single-family home on, on, on this lot. There's not even, the driveway would be a very interesting thing just to even talk about for this lot, because of the, the, the shape of the product. So I think we've done everything we can to come up to you with the right variances for this lot, and I'm happy to answer any further questions about it. But I think we've done, we've done our, our due diligence on this one and, and really do feel like we've come up with the best solution.
Thank you, sir.
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Coates.
Blaming the applicant and everything, but can I ask the legal question on this? Is that legal?
Sure.
My concern is, on number two, is three words. It says "as well as." And then it, it says that if it's common to the community, that's not, the way I read it, that's not a condition or hardship that's, you know, that, to, to, to approve a bar.
Yes, and I hope you understand, we, we will try to answer your question as it raises legal issues, but we have to be very careful not to respond in a way that seems to favor one decision on the variance or not. One, to be impartial, but also knowing that there could be an appeal. We, we don't want to articulate legal opinions that go to the, to the core issue here to influence the, the decision and have that go on the record. I think your point is, is, is a valid point. I mean, the regulation that requires 20,000 square feet minimum lot size is uniformly applicable in this zoning district. So yes, that's, that, that is, that's a point, I think, that's, that's beyond dispute. And I think it's, it's appropriate to include that the existence of that regulation is not a hardship in and of itself. If it were, then that might be a very good argument for a rezoning, to address that density, that lot size issue, if you will. But I, I, I think I, I would agree that that particular regulation is uniformly applicable to all the lots that are so situated, subject to those same regulations in the neighborhood. So that probably wouldn't support your decision of a hardship in and of itself. Now, there may be other grounds that, that would support that decision, but I do think that just the mere fact of being 20,000 square feet and that all properties around the property have not been developed, that probably is not sufficient evidence to support the variance in and of itself. There may very well be other arguments that one could make, but I think, I think we agree with that.
My opinion is, is the, the variance is not the solution to this. In my opinion, the, the solution to this is the town council to, to, to change, you know, the, the, you know, the lot, you know, the rule and everything. That's my only opinion. I'm not, you know, it, it, there's many uses that could be, and I agree with them. Nobody's come forward with any other use, but a medical, it, it says in our code that a medical office, a business office, there's a lot of uses that could be used for it. But if the town of Clayton wants apartments, which they said they did, in areas, they want more multiple, but it, I don't think it's a variance that, that gives them the right to do this.
I will offer that it's not unusual to have a circumstance such as this, where a particular use is not allowed, where the board may be presented with the choice of whether the variance remedy is the appropriate remedy, or whether a tax change, rezoning, is the appropriate remedy for a particular applicant. That's, that's not an infrequent circumstance.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Coates. Did you have anything to follow that up?
I do what?
Did you have another question? You're good there. Okay. Then I just, since we're here at number two, I wanted to build off of that for myself. So when I read that, hardships resulting from personal circumstances, as well as hardships resulting from conditions that are common to the neighborhood or general public, may not be the basis. I don't, I don't see that the same way that you do, but I respect where you're coming from, and I see that as this is a downtown area, so it is very hard to draw a conclusion that there even really is a common in this neighborhood. It's not like a new development where it's very uniform, and we're talking about an infill with very limited options. The only other thing I wanted to say about your comment regarding, you know, this is a town council issue or whatever, it's, it seems like anything they want to do with this property is going to have to have a variance, whether it's this one we do tonight or some other one. To me, for that, some kind of variance is going to happen. And so when I look at this, I see, okay, this is a tasteful, good use. It's housing, it's infill, it's an awkward lot, it's putting it to good use. And so when I see that, I think, well, it's either this variance or some other variance, and this seems like a very good plan to put residential in this spot. So just to kind of build off of, you know, I think we're kind of hearing from everybody where we stand with this. Mr. Bizzle?
Good comments. You know, I'm sitting here weighing everything. I, I, I think I see everybody's point, really. That's the problem here. You know, to me, having seen the site plan helps me with the decision, I think. The, the idea of eight apartments with 100% of the parking being onsite does bother me, there'll be no doubt. But it is in the downtown area. We have businesses that depend on, you know, on-street parking. And, and I look at the, the pictures of the red and white, and it makes me feel really old because I've shopped before. But I, I know they depended on the same thing, you know, on-street parking. And, and I think in this area, that's, that's just, that's, that's the character of downtown. You, you look for the parking, obviously, the tenants, it may be a problem. I think market will, will take care of that. I think market will, will take care of that. You know, if someone doesn't want a, you know, an apartment that doesn't have dedicated parking, I could, you know, they probably won't rent that, but there are some that will. Um, you know, so I, I, I say, when I see the site plan, it makes me feel a lot better. And to Mr. Coats's point, yeah, I, the code, it would be nice to have a tax change that took care of this. Unfortunately, we don't have it. I wish we did. Uh, it would make, well, they may not be in front of us right now asking for this variance. But, uh, given the situation, given the size of that, um, I think that does, that gives us some credence as far as, um, meeting the findings of fact. Obviously demonstrating the hardship is hard. You know, you, you don't necessarily have to put a residences on there, eight apartments. But, uh, I do like the site plan. I do like the density. Uh, when you look at B1, it, it doesn't have a density ceiling, you know, for this. So, uh, we do have a problem with our code there, I think. You know, when we can say that, you know, B1, you can have unlimited density, but yet you have to have a 20,000 square foot lot to do it. There is some, you know, discrepancies there. Um, and, and, you know, I'll go back, but this lot is unique and we, this board did, um, approve the setback variance, uh, knowing that, that, you know, the size of the lot was a problem back then and it's the problem today. So those are just my comments.
Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions? Um, let's see, I did want to, just going back to something you just said, Mr. Bizzle, about the, um, size and potential other uses and, you know, the fact that they are choosing to pursue townhomes apartments, um, that maybe that makes it hard to demonstrate number two is a hardship. What I was thinking about with that is number two says the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property. And if I just consider that for a moment, that if, if, you know, we turn down this use, any other use, I mean, a lot of other uses because of the size, it's going to be the same thing for number two. It's going to say the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property, whether it's accommodating a dumpster or parking or whatever. So to me, um, I see what you're saying though, about that, you know, they're pursuing the apartment townhome option, but it's almost like any option that was presented to us would satisfy number two just because of the size of this property and that it's landlocked. Um, so I was just going to throw that out there as well. Any other comments from the board this evening? If not, I can entertain a motion to either approve or not approve variance 2020-175-VAR. And then, um, keeping in mind that with the motion, um, we have these four findings as well. Oh, do we have a, a comment? Sure.
Is, uh, is there still time for each comment?
Hold on one second. I believe we would need to swear, swear him in. Sure. And then we can do that. If our town clerk would please swear you in.
If you could just raise your right hand. Please solemnly affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief.
Of it.
And when you speak, there's a sign sheet right there. Put a sign here.
Thank you, sir. Come on up to the podium.
Craig Lee, um, we have property across the street, as David mentioned, um, the barber shop across the street and a residence right beside it. And, uh, I kind of just, I know that they said that, uh, parking's kind of for another, another time, but, uh, this decision may, um, weigh on that future decision. So anyway, I just wanted to make the, the comment that, uh, we have, already have problems with parking and concerns from our tenants with parking. And, um, so I guess my concern is when you have residents there, they're going to find the first parking available, which may not be across the, where the 40 lot, um, is, and, and it may be, you know, become a hardship on, on them finding parking for their customers and so forth. So I just wanted to, we came to the meeting, I wanted to kind of state that, uh, and that's it.
Thank you for, for your comments. And there's the sheet right there.
Dave DeYoung again. Uh, my only rebuttal to that comment would be any use that goes on this lot, um, is going to generate parking. And just like the Lees, they do not have any onsite parking at their, at their business. It's all in the railroad corridor. Um, you know, we're trying our best to add, like I said, 40 to 57 additional spaces across the street to accommodate some of the other parking needs in the area that will shift parking. But the reality is, no matter what use goes on the site, I mean, the parking is shared parking in this area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments before we proceed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion, if there is one. Um, I don't hear anyone jumping on it, so I, I think as Chair, I am permitted to make a motion. Is that correct? Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve variance 2020-175-VAR, the loft set Wild District. This motion would be based on the following findings. One, unnecessary hardship does result from the strict application of the ordinance. Two, the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property, such as location, size, or topography. Three, the hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner. Four, the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the ordinance, such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved. So motion to approve made by Board Member Merritt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Powers. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries.
Madam Chair, it might be a good idea just to have those votes counted, uh, because we have a four-fifth majority requirement for variance.
Sure. So, um, for the, for the clerk, do we want to sew the no's? Do you want to raise your hands? We had one no, two nos, and then the yeses. Six yeses. Well, let's see. Never been good at math on the spot. Does that curious?
I did quick calculation and by my calculation, and I stand to be corrected, um, my understanding is we have eight members present and voting. So, uh, four fifths of eight. And by my calculation, that, that requires seven, but, um, I think everyone, I'd like to have someone looking over her shoulder on that.
And the, let's see, so the, it has to be four fifths?
It's not. Seventy-four percent.
So 6.4.
It was six to two.
I don't know how rounding works since we don't have a point four of a person.
That's 75%.
Yes, six to, yeah.
Did I do that wrong? Is that what you're saying?
We didn't meet four fifths.
We did not meet four fifths. Okay. Okay. So this is a new scenario for me. So, um, we will need to call on our town attorney for how that works.
Well, by my calculation, four fifths of eight is point eight and six eighths is point seven five. And so that would not be equal to a four-fifth majority.
Okay. So procedurally, what do we do? Then the no's have it? Is that, how do we say, how I would end that motion?
Well, the, 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 the motion to approve failed to carry.
Okay.
So that, that's in essence the action.
Okay. So then I need to, I guess, redact what I previously said about the motion carrying and say, um, say that, what you just said.
It just needs to be, needs to be corrected.
So then I would say the no's have it, the motion is lost.
Of the eight members present and voting, um, requiring a four-fifth majority vote to approve did not meet the four-fifth requirement with eight members present and voting, therefore the motion to approve failed to, failed to carry.
In, in this case, if, um, a member isn't willing to switch their vote to a yes, um, based on the facts, I would request to be tabled one month, uh, to the next planning board, uh, Board of Adjustment Meeting, where, um, another member would, could be present to make that motion carry.
Okay. So.
Madam Chair, I think that would require a motion to reconsider to be made by one of those voting in the, um, in the, in the, in, in, voting with the motion on the floor. And if a motion to reconsider passed, then you could take a motion to.
On order. Can a member of the audience, we're in the voting room. The, the public comments are over, so his comment was inappropriate. And a motion to table should come from one of the commission members, not a member of the audience.
Point taken. Well, hearing now, knowing that, um, I guess because you're also dealing with a fairly new, somewhat inexperienced chair here, so thank you for bearing with me. Since I made the motion and that is an option, and we are missing a board member, um, I would then like to make the motion to table this item until next month, when hopefully we have our full board here, if that's an option.
Madam Chair, I think, I think since a motion has, um, been on the floor and failed, I think you'll need a motion to reconsider. Um, and then if that motion is made, seconded, and passes, then you could, uh, entertain a motion to, um, to, uh, to take that action to table.
Okay. And so then, uh, if we do, if I do make a motion to reconsider and we have seven out of eight vote in favor of that, but that's what it would take, seven out of eight would have to vote in favor of tabling that motion.
That would be a simple majority requirement there. So I think five of eight would be fine on the motion to reconsider.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, to, to, you, sir, uh, is it a statute thing that everything that is quasi-judicial, maybe that comes up in the board has to pass by 80% or more?
No, sir, that's the requirement for a variance.
Oh, okay.
The other quasi-judicial decisions you make have only a simple majority requirement, but a variance is always, and that is statutory, that's in general statutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This has been a very educational night for me. I'm not sure about the rest of you. Um, okay. That being said, since I was the one who made the motion to approve the variance, um, I would like to introduce a motion to table this item until the February 2021 meeting of the planning board, when, and I already gave you my reasoning for that. Hopefully we would have all nine of our members here so that we could have a clearer, um, vote on that. So that is.
Madam Chair, I apologize, but since I've, since I've, I've made this, made this point before, I probably should just, um, emphasize it. In order for the matter to be brought back up, I think you would need to reconsider, um, the, the, the original motion, which was to approve, which was acted on, and in essence, in essence, would be a reconsideration of that action, since there was a vote taken on that action and a non-approval is tantamount to a denial. You probably need to entertain a motion to reconsider.
Mm-hmm.
The, the matter. And if there is a motion to reconsider and it passes by a simple majority, then a motion to table action on this application to a later time would be appropriate.
Okay. So when you say reconsider the matter, that I would, I would say reconsider variance 2020-1?
Reconsider the vote that was taken and failed.
Okay.
To approve the application.
Madam Attorney Jack, if, if we set this precedent tonight and we do this, it means any decision that we make here forward, all we have to do is somebody to vote, well, if something fails four-three, it's the fourth. Just to take a motion to reconsider until we get the right mix of, uh, commission members present. I, I don't know if you want to go down that road and set that precedent. None of our, none of our decisions will be upheld and, and at any moment, if we don't like a decision that's been made by this body, we are just waiting to the right mix of commission members present. And let's say next month, somebody else is out. Do we reconsider again until we get the decision that's favorable to the majority?
I think you make an excellent point, and I can let other board members speak to that. Um, I guess I could, I see what you're saying, except that there is a mechanism here for this. And the fact that we are missing a planning board member, does that, that doesn't weigh in for you? I mean, that this path exists legally and we are missing a, a planning board member?
But there's no guarantee that, uh, these, all, next month, all of us will be there. So if I voted tonight or Mr. Powers voted tonight and he's out, he said, well, I wasn't there to vote, but I voted the first time, so now we need to wait to march to have this vote. This can go on and on and on forever.
Yeah, so I, I, I agree. So we, they do have the ability to appeal, right? So that's the next step. If they were denied here, they can appeal, correct?
That's correct. The appeal is to, uh, to Superior Court.
To Superior Court, right. So I'm in agreement with that. I think we, we don't know what's going to happen next month. We may not have the amount of members here, just like he said, so I would say if, if we deny, they have the option to appeal if they'd like to appeal.
So that's great feedback. It sounds like we have two people with that, that mindset. I'd, I'd possible like to hear from other board members, since this is such a unusual Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask, it's a, an absolute that you have to be physically present here at the board meeting. You couldn't, like, we all voted tonight. Does that vote stand somewhere in the history that the person that's missing is just the only one that needs to weigh in next month? I don't, I'm just asking, because I'm not sure. Is there a way to retain those votes or do we start all over again next month and vote with whoever's here?
Good question. Um, the way I understand it, it would be just a, a new, we would revisit it with a, with a completely new vote.
That's correct. Excluding vacancies, a quorum is a majority of all of the members of the board. Um, once you have a quorum, even though there may be an absent member or conceivably two absent members, the board is entitled to act, um, with those present. And the number of members present and voting, that determines the number of votes that are required to approve a measure. Simple majority would, would, would be for all non-variance applications. And if there are absent, um, members, eight is the divisor, the dividend.
Got it.
That you look to, to determine if, 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 if a measure passes or not. Just by way of information, I, Raleigh, their Board of Adjustment has procedure. If they have two members absent, they immediately postpone all measures because it requires a unanimous vote of those present to approve a variance. And they, just as a matter of procedure, felt that that was too high a standard. And statutory standard, four fifths, that's a, that's a, that's 80%, that's very high. It's a super, super majority requirement. But that's, those are just the rules. But yes, you take the board as the board appears ready to do business, so long as there is a quorum, that constitutes the number, with respect to which you calculate the four-fifth vote.
Understood. Thank you.
Did you just say that?
Did you just say that Raleigh, for a variance, they have to have a hundred, a hundred percent?
No, sir, they, they, they have a procedural rule, and I, it has really nothing to do with your procedure, but, but it's in recognition of the fact that, in their case, if two members are not present and voting, they will defer all variance applications on that agenda, because the burden is so high, it requires a unanimous decision to approve any variance, that's the way the math works out, so, I just say that to illustrate that, in this case, of course, it's not unanimous, but it's, 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 four-fifths of eight is a more difficult task than four-fifths of nine.
Sure.
Obviously. But that's, that's, that's the way the rules play out.
Right, and I guess that's, for me, part of why this is, it's particularly, to me, impactful that we had this vote when we're missing a member, because it, the numbers, it just makes that more difficult, I also, just as a, you know, citizen of the town, I mean, that's why I'm on this board, I do get a little nervous about this going to, being appealed to a higher court, a higher body, and, you know, if we have, if we have interpreted these correctly, or how a judge would see them, and how that would affect the town in, in a, in a court situation. So, just to, to kind of recap here, so, if I was to say reconsider the matter, the vote that was taken failed, it sounds like we have two people still, anyway, who wouldn't want to proceed that direction, I guess I'm kind of hoping to hear from some other board members in, here, I think you kind of know where three of us stand, Marty?
I was hoping to just be quiet, I think this is kind of unprecedented for this board, at least the several years I've been on it, I don't know that we've had a situation come up, I think hindsight's 2020, I have been on the other side, and I have asked for a matter to be tabled before the vote, I don't know if I've ever seen one asked to be tabled after the vote, I don't know that really, well, I don't, I just haven't seen that happen before, we have fine legal advice here, and I totally support what attorneys are saying, I guess I would say, if there is a vote, I would, I would vote again, I voted for it, I would vote again for it, but it's, it's, it's tough to reconsider the vote, I would go with the pleasure of the board, if they said, if the pleasure of the board would be revoked later, tabled, I would, I would go with that.
Okay. Mr. Coats?
Madam Chair, I, I didn't bring it with me, but I did a lot of research before I, I made my decision to oppose this tonight, and in my reading and everything, it indicated that if, even if it's turned down, there is, and the, and the town council, the powers to be, there is another way that they can make, they can approve this themselves, with, you know, it's, and I don't, I didn't have, I didn't bring it with me, it was not on, not on, it was a legal, in the state of North Carolina, it was not a, a Facebook post, or anything like that, that I read, there was a legal opinion, in some case or something, that indicated that if, in fact, a, the Board of Adjustments, which we actually acted as tonight, and, and we don't have a Board of Adjustment, we took their place, but if, in fact, it was turned down, that the powers to be, the town council in our case, could do something, that, that, if they were that much in favor of this project, they can handle this themselves, as opposed to taking this to court or whatever, you know, but, and I'm just saying that, you know, I may be completely wrong, and we got legal here to tell us, but, you know, but I agree with, I, I don't see any need of carrying this over.
Thank you for your comments, Board Member Coats. Did you have a comment, Mr. Powers, it looked like, okay, just to go back to our legal counsel then, I don't know if that's too much of a question on the spot like that, but it sounds like Board Member Coats is saying there's another mechanism where they could get this project taken care of, even with our vote of no.
Is that, is that comment you made earlier, it's not unusual for an application for a variance to relate to some of the same issues that could be taken up in a rezoning, they are two remedies to a property owner, to have a proposed use approved, one is through the hardship mechanism, by way of variance, and the other is to modify the code, and there's nothing in the action that, that, well, the motion failed, and if the action, the final disposition is not to approve this variance application, there's nothing that would prevent or impair the town council from considering a rezoning proposal to accomplish the same result, that is, to allow the applicant's proposal.
Well, Hefter, oh, Mr. Powers?
I just wanted to, to say, I, I think it would be a good idea for this board, as, as legal has, has said, has done in other places, to when they have a variance coming up on, on the agenda, if, if it's not a, a, a full board present, to postpone it until the next meeting, and I think what we inadvertently went through is, is, is not a good thing to do, when you're, you're telling twenty-five percent of the people here that we don't, we don't like what you voted on, we're going to wait till next week, or next month, and that, that's, that's, I, I realize that, I, I don't know if anybody else here knew that we needed eighty percent, and that would mean we'd have to have either unanimous or seven of the eight people, but we, we at least need to know what we need to pass something when we go to a vote, when I voted, I was thinking, if, if there's eight people here, if we got five people, it passed, because that's a majority, if, if there's, if there's some other constraint on variances or anything else, that, that needs to be explained before the vote, but if it's, if it's that way on variances, I would make the suggestion that we, we make some kind of a commitment, that any time we have a, a variance, that we make sure we have a full, a full planning board here, that's all.
Those are good comments, thank you, yeah, I think that we don't hear these regularly, and we don't have members gone very often, so it was just a combination of factors, so having heard from most of us on the board here, and given the circumstances, I think that, for me, I'm, I'm not going to pursue a motion, I'm just going to let it, let it ride as it has, let the chips fall as they have, and so, but if anyone else, I guess, I just wanted to ask the attorney, at this point, I think we've taken the vote, it didn't pass, and so, there, what are the options at this point, it's either, it didn't pass, and we move on to the next item, or if another board member wanted this matter reconsidered and tabled, is it an option for them, or is it only on me, since I made that last motion?
Madam Chair, if there is no motion to reconsider, tonight's action is final action, and I'll confess, under Roberts' rules, and Roberts' rules applies to your deliberative portion of this hearing, but not to the quasi-judicial hearing itself, that is, the evidentiary hearing, my recollection was that a motion to reconsider needed to be made at the same session, by a member who voted with the previous motion, that is, that was part of the motion that carried, voted for the motion that, or, excuse me, the motion that didn't carry, I will have to check and see if a later motion to reconsider would be in order, that is, one that takes place not tonight, but next month, but with that caveat, if there is no motion to reconsider at this point, the, the action denying the variance is, is final action.
Okay.
That would be my opinion.
Thank you for that, then I just wanted to say, for me, as the one who made the motion, I do not plan to make a motion to reconsider, because of the fact that I've heard from four board members who do not appear to be in favor of that, and so, I don't feel comfortable doing that without, with, with lacking half of the board's support for that, and if there are any other comments? Okay, the motion does not carry. The next item on the agenda is 6C, 2020-173-RZ, the lots at Wild District rezoning, we'll now hear from staff.
Good evening, Chair Merritt, members of the planning board, Jeff Keynes, planner with the town of Clayton, before I presented, began the presentation, I was just asked by the applicant to table this item, so I'm not sure on the next steps on this, if we would proceed, or table the application for a future date, I have the applicant here, who can make the comment to you directly, if legal would like to hear from the applicant.
So it sounds like there is a request to table this, and can that be done at this time, just verbally?
I, I believe I can request to have my item tabled before any vote is taken, I appreciate the dialogue on the last item, and by, and for no means was I intending that if you brought back the eighth member of the planning board, that I would then get my way, I would have come with some additional information on that item, which would have included the, you know, the lot sizes in the, in the neighborhood, and some of the other concerns, I think one of the things that should have been said on the last item is the only zoning district in which you can have a density of greater than twelve units per acre is the downtown overlay district, so, I can't, I can't rezone to any other district, so, we were working with what we had to work with, we will come back with another plan, hopefully it'll be one that this, this board can support, again, I think you are correct, Ms. Merritt, there isn't any, anything that we're going to bring back to you, that isn't going to require a variance one way or the other, so it's a little disheartening to stand here today, as the previous planning director, and someone who worked on the downtown master plan for, for this town, to see the town denies something that was something that they asked for, and we brought what you asked for, so, with that, please accept my request to table this item.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 6D, 2021-07-0A, I'm sorry, we actually did an adjustment to our agenda, that would make our next item on the agenda 7A, 2020-146-SP, Caterpillar Visitor Center Major Site Plan, we'll now hear from staff.
Good evening, Chair Merritt, members of the planning commission, Jeff Keynes, land use planner with the town of Clayton, and I promise this is my last presentation tonight, but, this is a very interesting project, tonight I appear to present the Caterpillar Visitor Center and Major Site Plan, 2020-146-SP, the request tonight is by the, the company Caterpillar to expand on their site, a demonstration field for visitors, and to add a storage shelter, and an area for test equipment to be housed, and then also an area to clean off the equipment after it, essentially, the equipment plays in the dirt, if you will, the zoning of this area has, has been zoned I-2, the property is a large property, is just under a hundred and forty acres in size, and is just south of Highway 42, where it's next to the Clayton Fire Station on 42, out there. This project, it consists of three main areas, the first one is the demonstration area, to, it would be to, we'll just say, the northwest section of the site plan, the section two is where they're going to storage, and called demuck and clean area, that's to the south, in the southern part of the site plan, and then the demonstration field area for visitors and a showcase, which is on the eastern side of the project, the smaller box that is shown on, on the general site plan. And it's hard to see all the different areas, because the site is that large, but just for reference, the building, Caterpillar building and parking lot, and at the bottom you can see the pieces of equipment on the eastern side, it's over a million square foot of building, it's about the same size, and some, some may argue a little bit larger than the demonstration area that is under review for tonight, so it gives you a large picture of the area in question, that is going to be reviewed and decided upon, but it also shows us the, the scale of the building that's already been developed in the, in the area. And again, a street, this picture from the outside, lots of trees, obviously, a piece of equipment out front to, to show the entrance for, for the, for the project site, the development does maintain a large number of trees along Highway 42, so it would be screened from public view, and I don't know the exact depth, probably a hundred feet, maybe, most likely more, a hundred feet of, of depth in trees, so the impact area will be screened from view, and drivers pass the, the Caterpillar site. As with all applications, we take a close look at the consistency and compatibility, according to the comprehensive plan, the 2040 plan, it is, this area is identified as employment center, I gave three bullet points of the, what the employment center consists of, and all of these examples are consistent with the heavy industrial I-2 zoning designation that this property does carry. And I wanted to show you the consistency of the employment center, which I highlighted on the left, to the I-2, which is the X that is also highlighted on the right, to show that this property, which is highlighted in blue, is consistent with the surrounding employment center area, there is some other type of zoning towards the east, but they are buffered by additional properties to, to the east, which, and also keep in mind that the properties that are not zoned, or that are not designated employment areas, is already developed, so we're essentially looking at the western side of the site, of the employment area, which is also closer to more blue than it is to the green, or to the, to the yellow. So for this type of project, staff does give a recommendation, and staff's recommendation is for approval of this major site plan, we have reviewed the application, both, again, with, say, stay with the comprehensive plan, with the zoning compliance, it does meet all code criteria, and we, we, staff finds that this application meets the criteria as adopted in the UDC Chapter 155. And we do have the applicant's representative here in attendance, if you have any questions, he'd be more than happy to come up, he does not have a presentation, but, again, he is here to answer any questions you may have for him, with that, I conclude, the staff With that, I conclude the staff report and answer any questions that the planning board may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. We can call on the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Jay Smith. I'm a principal with O'Brien Atkins Associates in Research Triangle Park. I really don't have anything to add to Jeff's presentation. He did a good job. Caterpillar is excited to expand and improve on their existing demonstration area. If you have any further questions, I'd be delighted to answer them. Caterpillar is proud to be a community, a community, community member for, in the town of Clayton.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any questions for the applicant?
I have a couple. First of all, thank you, Galapella, for your contributions to Clayton and to Johnson County. You're a great, great company, and we appreciate you being here. I just had two questions. On Area 2, that parking, is that already there, the parking lot, Area 2 on this map?
Yes, that's an existing parking lot.
Okay, and then the Area 13, the sound test pad back on, all by the, on the south end of the property, is that already there too?
That's existing.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant this evening? All right, thank you, sir. And now we can turn it over to, well, actually, let's check, are there any public comments on this matter? Okay. And we can turn it over to the board for their consideration. I was just going to say, I was happy to see this come through. They've been a fantastic company to have in Clayton, and I'm, I think it's great, any kind of improvements that you make out there, I'm happy to see them. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. That would be to either approve or not approve 2020-146-SP.
Hi, I'm Chair. I make a motion to approve the major site plan as submitted.
Second.
Motion to approve by Board Member Coats, and the second was Board Member Moore, or Powers. I think I heard Moore's voice first, so we'll go with that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. The last item we have on the agenda this evening is going back to item number 6D 2021-07-0A, 160D Ordinance Amendment. And we'll now hear from staff.
Samantha, the Will and Weber Planning Director, again. I will introduce our consultant, so, and give a little background on this. So 160D, we've been working on this since approximately last spring. It is mandated changes by the legislature, and we have until this summer to implement those. So we are still on track with where we originally wanted to implement these changes, and that is the hearing before you tonight. We have been working, again, with our consultant, lots of long hours working on this, but it's necessary, and again, it's mandated. So, and as you may recall, we had our work session back in October that we went over these changes, and nothing, nothing big has definitely changed since that. And you do have the charts, you have the clean and the strike-through versions, and I do want to go over some changes. There is a couple of changes that are not 160D related, and one of those is going to be your facade improvements, and that means that no more than 10% of your facade, unless you're in an industrial district, can be metal. And just want to hit some highlights real quick, and I know, I'm going to let Chad, Chad with Stewart, he's going to be presenting, but big things, there's no longer going to be major or minor site plans, it's just site plan. Conditional use permits are going to be special use permits, so this board will no longer hear conditional use permits, because they're all going to be special use permits. There were some, some permitted uses, accessory uses, that table, the use table was changed some. Again, those are related to 160D. Plan developments will be conditional zoning, and major subdivisions will be, go through the TRC process, but they will not go before council anymore. So I'm going to let Chad present and talk about a few other things, but just want to give a little brief introduction and some highlight of the, of the major changes. So, thank you all. And again, this is an ordinance amendment, just like any other text amendment. The planning board is a recommending body, and then this will proceed to council for a final decision on February 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
All right, thanks.
And there's the...
Can I just press it here?
Sure.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I know the last thing you want to hear after deliberating for two hours, a long presentation on text amendments, so I'll try to be, be brief. Samantha did a really good job of sort of outlining the process of where we are right now, and again, this is, I think, the third time that we've, we've been before y'all to discuss these items. So I'll try to be brief, and if you do have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. So again, what is 160D? It is probably one of the largest, most comprehensive planning and zoning changes that has occurred in probably the last 20 or 30 years, maybe even longer than that. And it really consolidates some of the regulations that are out there that were with the county and towns. So it's actually a merger of those regulations. Counties had 153A, towns had 160A, and now they're combined into 160D. And it is a mandatory update that is required by July of this year, actually became effective January of this year. So towns all across the state are going through the same thing y'all are going through, and we're helping a lot of them get to this point. So a lot of y'all are ahead of, ahead of the game, so to speak, in the process. So again, what is this? It's a consolidation of the general statutes from the county and towns into one. It clarifies the development type reviews, what you'll see, there's really three types, and we'll get into the details of what that means a little later on. But really, you have an administrative review, you have a legislative review, and you have evidentiary or quasi judicial review. And we'll go into exactly what those three things mean in a little more detail as we go forward. You also have uniform terminology. So what had happened over time is you had different definitions that had been occurring in different towns, things such as site plan and the definition of a dwelling, things of that nature. So you have that uniform terminology now that'll be in your UDC. Restrictions on conditions, so I think that the way it's worded now is that it can only be conditions that can be enforced through your UDO, or UDC in your case. And then the standardized procedures, which we'll get into detail what that means going forward. So as I mentioned before, there are three development types. The administrative review is really dealing with what your staff does to enforce. Zoning permits, you know, administering decisions through your code and interpreting, making decisions. Legislative process is more along the lines of a policy-driven type hearing, and that deals with rezonings and text amendments. And then the quasi judicial case, which is similar to what you did tonight. You had a evidentiary hearing that's very subjective, it can be discretionary, and it is based on findings of fact. So you can't have quasi, you can't have ex parte communication, so it's very court-like in the setting. And so what you see at the bottom of your screen is, is really how the public participation, public participation is involved in your first category. So administrative is very low, you know, that's your staff doing their job. Legislative is very high, you have a lot of people that come out and can speak for or against those cases. And then quasi judicial was very low, because it is, findings of fact driven and evidentiary hearing, excuse me, evidentiary driven, so you have to have expert testimony a lot of times that come before these things. So maybe you have a TIA, and you have a traffic consultant that comes and speaks before it, or maybe it's dealing with property values, and you have an appraiser that comes and speaks. Predictability, administrative is very high, legislative can be medium, and quasi judicial can be a little low at times. And then you see the risk factor, and then the discretion. And with the administrative process, it's very low, legislative, it's very high, and then it's kind of varies with your quasi judicial.
Quasi judicial decisions.
So this kind of provides a flow chart of how those decisions will work. Again, you have them broken down into three categories. You have administrative, legislative, and quasi judicial. And, you know, you'll see the process by which these things go. So the administrative process is reviewed by staff, decisions are made by staff, and if there is an appeal, that goes to the Board of Adjustment, which is, which is this board. The second process is the legislative process, and that's reviewed by staff. There's a recommendation by the planning board, which is similar to what you did tonight. And then it is heard before council, and the appeal for that actually goes to Superior Court. And then there's another case that you guys actually had tonight as well, and that's the quasi judicial process. So again, that's reviewed by your staff, the evidentiary hearing is made by the Board of Adjustment, and if there is an appeal to that, that goes to Superior Court. And so really, going forward, those are your, really, your three types of development processes in the town. The other, the other area was the conditional zoning. And as, as it stands right now, you have conditional use districts. And so, you know, those formerly had required quasi judicial zoning type thing, and that's no longer allowed under the new general statutes. The conditional zoning is now purely legislative, and it combines, you know, a zoning change with potentially a site plan, and some conditions that could be part of that site plan, as well as the land uses. And so it really creates the specifics for that track. And at the bottom, you see, you know, how does this affect Clayton? Well, you know, the existing legal vested rights are retained, and the public has more access to participate in a conditional zoning. You know, so again, conditional zoning is a legislative process, so it really opens the door for the public to be involved. So as I mentioned, there are no more conditional use permits with the general statutes. They're no longer allowed. So a lot of places had conditional use permits, and now these are being converted to special use permits. And these still require a quasi judicial process, very similar to a conditional use permit. So it's really more of a nomenclature, name change. One of the things that we also looked at with your staff on this was, you had some uses that actually required a conditional use permit that were very low controversy, or perhaps, you know, one we, we've dealt with in some other communities, is you had to have a conditional use permit for a bank, and the only condition was the teller had to be on the side of the building. You know, so is that really something that, that garners up an evidentiary hearing for something like that? So I think those were some of the uses that we looked at to, to make those permitted uses, and still retain the uses that could be perceived as making a big impact, and kept those as special use permits. So that was in your use table that Samantha had mentioned, and on how those changes were So a subdivision really is a use by right, and it should be one of those things in the statutes, the 160D really helps clarify that, that if it meets the requirements of your ordinance, then it should be permitted. Now, currently, there's a, there's the use of a PUD in your code, and that, now PUDs will be converted into the conditional zoning process. And so what that means is you'll have, again, with a conditional zoning process, you have more, more opportunities for the public to be involved. And so how does this affect you? Well, the subdivided land now will be processed by your staff, according to the rules established by council at the rezoning hearing. So I think that that really puts the emphasis on that zoning process, and really encouraging the conditional zoning process to be utilized more. Because at the end of the day, if there's a subdivision, and it's a use by right, and it meets all the requirements of your ordinance, then it makes it very hard to, to make a decision to deny that. And, you know, often also with, with that process being a quasi judicial process, it makes it difficult as a decision maker, because you have to, you cannot have ex parte communication on those. So it makes it very, very difficult. So same thing with site plan, it's, as long as it is a development that meets the standards of your code, then it will be administered by your staff. And then the other part of that is that 160D specifies that the town may not have any conditions that are not legally enabling by your UDC. So at the bottom, you see how does this affect you? From going forward, your, your site plans, you won't have major or minor, you'll have a site plan, and that'll be handled by your staff, as long as it's a permitted use in that zoning district. So as far as the review authority goes, after this update, the administrative process, which again is, is enforced and administered by your staff, will do zoning permits, which is the way it is now. They will review subdivision plaits, and they'll do traffic analysis, administrative amendments, and site plans, which formerly site plans were done by the planning board. As far as the planning board's roles and responsibilities, you will still do rezoning and make, make your recommendations on rezonings, both conventional and conditional zonings, ordinance amendments, so text amendments, like we're doing tonight. Conditional use permits will become special use permits, and those will be heard by the town council. Site plans, again, will go back to being an administrative function. Variances, as you heard tonight, will stay with the planning board slash Board of Adjustment. And if there is an appeal by your staff, that's also something that is heard by the Board of Adjustment. And then, of course, the town council will hear rezonings, ordinance amendments, and special use permits. So moving forward after these amendments, those are the things that will change. So real quickly, going through the articles, Article 1 is your general provisions. You'll see that we've made a lot of references to the new general statutes. There's been some code language that's been relocated to a more appropriate section of your ordinance. Again, conditional use permits have migrated to special use permits, and then the special use, special use districts and the planned development districts have been moved to the conditional zoning districts. So that's with Article 1. Article 2, as I mentioned before, about the, the changes, so everything that was a conditional use permit now has become a special use permit, except those that were, had some minor, non- controversial things that were associated with them. We removed the minimum size for required homes. That is illegal, you cannot have a minimum size for houses, so that was taken out of your code. We clarified the administrative modifications process, and limited the updates for typos to align with state statutes. So some of the, the terminology that was in there, such as group care homes and daycares and agricultural sales, things of that nature, were updated. So with Article 4, your development standards, this has established the standards for alley loaded townhomes. This was more of a housekeeping item than it was 160D related. Again, Samantha mentioned about the commercial buildings, and then realigned the waiver and informational administrative modifications to the variance process. So the ordinance is very, the 160D updates are very clear about the modifications and changes being a quasi judicial process. So it's in conformance with state law, it's more predictable, and it prevents the appearance of favoritism. Natural resources was very small. This was a state change that was made that, regarding the minimum lot size requirement, so this was a very minor change that was made in Article 5. Article 6, the fee in lieu for unconstructed improvements were revised to 125%, which is allowed as the state requirements. And again, realigned the subdivision review process for purely administrative purposes. Article 7, as I mentioned previously, about the site plans to administrative review, clarified the conditional zoning process, which was, some was formerly the PUD process. It clarified the administrative modification standards, and again, as I mentioned, the transfer, transfer of conditional use permits to special use permits. In Article 8, there was a comprehensive set of definitions that were added based on the general statute. So for instance, this is an example you see on your screen of administrative decision. So you, if you've gone through and seen, there were probably a dozen or more definitions that needed to be modified based on 160D. And those are, some of those are listed on your screen, such as, you know, dwelling, dwelling unit, structure, and some others. So gone over a lot, but I think we've, we've been working on this for quite a while, and I think it's gone through all the eyes that need to look on it from staff, and I believe your attorneys have looked at it as well. This is some information where you can find out more about it, and it's also able to find through the website and also contact your planning board, or your planning department. So with that, I will be quiet. I know it's been a long night for y'all, and see if you have any questions.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that was a lot.
You did, I thought you did a great job summarizing it, though, the key points. But any questions from the board? Okay. No questions.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, I will now turn it over to the board for their consideration. We're all wishing we had a little caffeine onboard, maybe, at this point. If there are no comments, I can entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend 2021-07-0A 160D Ordinance Amendment to the town council.
Recommend it to the town council.
Thank you. Motion to recommend from Board Member Powers. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Board Member Avery. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, the last item on our agenda this evening is informal discussion and public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this time? If not, I can entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd like, first of all, I'd like to go on record of thanking Frank Price. We didn't know he was not going to be coming back with us, collapsed at the meeting last week, but he was a very valuable member of this Board of Planning Board for over 20 years. I don't know how many it was. But I just want to go on record of thanking him. He was our chair for many years. He did a great job, and we're going to miss him. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Yeah, I was not aware either that that was his last meeting, and it was a pleasure to work with him. So, thank you for stating that. Any other comments before we? Okay, I can entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Board Member Coats. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Board Member Powers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.